The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May School Board meeting. I guess I'd kick things off with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Evening Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Leighton Warren.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
And Vanden Hoewel.
Here. Six board members are present and just wanted to recognize Brenda Warren is excused for tonight's meeting. All right, next we have our Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and next up is our mission statement, which will be read tonight by Vice President Laura McCoy. I think.
Might have to get refreshed. I had to do that.
Dawn, if you've got it, go ahead.
Yep. We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Dawn. Finally, in opening activities, we have our collaborative commitments. Again, these are statements that the Board a number of years ago now drafted in terms of how we do our business together. The collaborative commitments are listed there and how we strive to act with each other and interact during our meetings. Okay, moving on to number two, we have our open forum and kicking that off is our Inner City Student Council report. Tonight, I believe we have two members of our Inner City Student Council, Vice President Brayden Freeburg from Southwest and Juliana Navarro from East. So Brayden or Juliana, do you want to give us your update?
Yes, I would love to. I will be so not a ton this recently, but there's some quite nice stuff. A big accomplishment from Haley Nowitzki from Preble, who finished 11th overall at the State Cross Country Meet. And from Southwest, shout out to my principal for getting the Herb Cole Award, which is really cool. And Greta Hansen from Southwest as well went on to the FRCC Girls All-Conference Second Team, and she qualified for State Cross Country. And I believe it was this weekend, though I haven't counted her response for how well she did. So that sucks, but it's fine. And Yuli, would you like to take the rest?
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. So for ease, sports are going too well. We don't have a lot, but we have a little bit going on at school. Our spring blood drive happened last month, which was really good. I'm not sure on the results of how much blood we got from that, but from what I've heard, it was pretty, it went pretty good. And then also for seniors, our cap and gown pickup are Wednesdays. And something interesting that thankfully, thanks to the Board, we got was we got new Chromebooks, which I'm guessing it's for everybody. But yeah, that was really exciting. So that's what I have for good news.
From our ICSC representative, Ms. Sorenson, she was talking about how her students love the new Chromebooks, that they really liked it. So again, thank you for those.
Yeah, me too.
Yes.
Sorry.
And that would be it. Thank you.
Brayden and Yuli, thank you very much for that report. We love hearing those stories. All right, next up on open forum is our recognition. We have fortunately a great number of people that we want to recognize tonight. So Steve, I'll hand it over to you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And we're going to be joined in just a moment. Our first group of recipients we'd like to recognize tonight are Golden Apple winners. So I'll give Lori just a moment. They're in the improvised green room outside. No M&amp;M's, no goodies out there, but all right, come on in. Thank you very much. The Green Bay Public School District was well-represented again this school year at the Golden Apple Awards with 10 teachers and two teacher teams identified as teachers of distinction for 2021, and three Golden Apple Award winners. And with us this evening, Abby Vang from Washington Middle School, Jessica Bernard from Nicolay, and Jenna Mixer from JADAL. And if you had the opportunity, they televised the award ceremony this year. And so we got to see some great examples of the work that they're doing in the classroom. And more importantly, we got to hear from them about the importance of education and the work that they do with our kids. So if you would please join me in congratulating the three of them. And we didn't require that you do a speech while you're here, so you're all off the hook, even though they did a great speech at the ceremony themselves. So again, we had a little bit different format this year. So at the Golden Apple Awards, I know many of our board members were unable to join you because we made sure that your seats were filled with your friends, your family, and your coworkers. And so we were really pleased with that opportunity for them to be able to share with you and join in our excitement and congratulate you again on the wonderful recognition.
Congratulations.
We're all grinning behind these masks. I promise. So thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Wonderful. And next we have our Herb Cole recipients. Many of you, I'm sure, remember Herb Cole is one of our U.S. senators, very, very involved in education and very supportive of our teachers, our administrators, and our students over the years. We are very fortunate this year to have two recipients of Herb Cole Awards. The first one is Rod Boehm, who's the principal at Southwest High School. He is a Herb Cole Educational Foundation Award winner. As a principal leader, Rod was chosen as a principal for setting high standards for instruction, achievement, and character, and creating a climate to best serve students, families, staff, and the community. From the student perspective, we have Raquel Covedo-Vasquez from East High School. She is also Herb Cole Educational Foundation Award winner, and she is a recipient of the Student Initiative Scholarship or Scholar Award. Raquel was chosen by her school for demonstrating exceptional initiative in the classroom and showing strong promise for succeeding in college and beyond. Many of you, I believe, are aware, but these are very highly sought after in competitive awards. And to have both a student and an administrator representative is a definite privilege and an honor for the Green Bay Public School District. I'd ask you to please join me in congratulating these two fine individuals on their recognition. And we're not requiring a speech of you tonight, so thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Welcome, welcome. So in this season of televised award presentations, you may have seen this one. This is the Future 15 Young Professional Award. We have someone in the table here who was running around town delivering recognition. So thank you to that, for that, Eric. Each year, the Current Young Professionals, a program of the Greater Green Bay Area Chamber, recognizes the accomplishment of talented young professionals making an impact within the community with its Future 15 and Young Professional Awards, presented by the Schneider MBA Program at St. Norbert College. This year, Diana Del Becky, our own Community Resource Coordinator, was selected from 15 finalists to receive the Young Professional of the Year Award, which celebrates an individual demonstrating career excellence as well as a commitment to the Greater Green Bay Area through civic and business involvement, especially during the past year. And if you saw her video and her award, it was incredibly motivating. We thank you for everything that you're doing for our children, our families, and the community. Please join me in recognizing her.
All right, thank you for that, Steve. Certainly lots to celebrate and great people to be proud of in this district. So that was fun. All right, transitioning on then, last item in open forum is our public forum. As a reminder, right now, people are able to go onto our website and register if they would like to receive a call during our school board meetings. We had one person who registered. And Josh, when you're ready, if you could get them on the line, please. All right. Melissa, can you hear me?
I can.
All right, thank you. If you could start by introducing yourself, giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Sure. My name is Melissa Stitts. My address is 3487 Bay Highlands Drive in Green Bay, Wisconsin. Okay, I just want to say thanks again for taking my call this evening. I just wanted to bring a few items forward for consideration. And before I get started, I just wanted to share that I'm a proud engaged parent of Green Bay public school systems and have stood proudly for education that was paid by taxpayers for our children. In addition, it's been really refreshing to see the schools that get back to the classroom face-to-face options. Four days is good. Five days would be even better. And I'm hoping we can be guaranteed five days face-to-face options next year, in addition to all the great extracurricular events that have been taking place. If we have new board members, new members to the Board, some of you that have accepted different positions, I just want to say thanks again for listening to what I'm about to say. And I would just ask for an open mind in terms of the conversation because you are all held to a high standard as an elected official. And your decision-making should be thought through in how it will not only impact students of Green Bay, and I'll just call it GBAP now and in the future. I encourage each of you to be continually engaging. Thank you, Eric, for your response today. Continue to be transparent with sharing the Board's agenda on social media. Engage your voters and also speak to how and why you vote as the way you do. I believe each of you began social media pages with the intent to engage families, yet no one has posted the agenda for tonight's meeting or has asked any feedback on agenda items. I know that families can pull the information from the district website, but it is quite cumbersome. You have to click multiple different links to get there, and that might be difficult for some to navigate. So please consider transparency on social media. I would suspect your jobs are easier when you get little to no feedback. When there is feedback, it requires your time and your thought to answer questions. And I just want to make sure that as we move forward, we're not heading into a limited vacuum of feedback where we were operating prior to August of last year because this is part of the concern that moved GBAP into the predicament of declining enrollment in which we are today. So let's keep the dialogue open. Just a couple of quick recaps to help explain my comments. Yes, we were in a pandemic, and with that, many districts across our state and the U.S. handle things much differently than we did. None of us ever wants to believe that we didn't do the best job possible on any board that we're elected to or volunteer for. That's human nature. That's the core of who we are. But the fact of the matter is you did fail some families and drove away a significant portion of our students. Unfortunately, through the decision-making by the Board and Superintendent, GBAP's enrollment has declined. If we were a private sector business, we would be looking for ways to save money and cut costs so that we could stay in business. The impact is around 2,000 students leaving, of which our superintendent can say in social media, most of it's 4K, which are not required to be in school. But we also know that there's a master of twisting of data and information in media. And unfortunately, our local media does not fact-check. But the fact of the matter is, when parents enroll kids in school, if 4K, and if they love the teacher and the school themselves, they will not come back to us. They will watch and they'll compare their district where they're at now. And if their district is doing better than ours, they will not move their kids back to us. This will impact future students to GBAP, particularly if it's the oldest child in a family and there's additional kids that are brought into the family. And we need to look in the mirror and we need to own these facts and try to figure out ways, how are we going to move forward? In Green Bay and surrounding communities, we have the luxury of having multiple districts within minutes, five minutes, 10 minutes, 20 minutes away. So this is something that we have to keep in mind, and we have to make sure that we're engaging. One thing I want to point out is the fact of, in terms of our quarantining, it is much different than our local districts. We are currently at 14 days or more. And the Wisconsin Department of Health states 10 days with no symptoms and no test, or seven days with negative tests in the last six to seven days. Many schools in Wisconsin follow this. And those 2,000 students that are missing or left or gone, those families are watching to see how we handle this. So I would just lastly end with, I know that there's going to be some votes coming up on budget, on potentially purchasing a building, Cup of Joy probably in the future, and also on, there'll be some information on referendums. But with, you know, our enrollment's declining, we just need to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible. And if there is an area that we're going to be cutting, we need to look at the very top level. We need to not be looking at teachers because we need them. We need them. And right now, other districts are trying to recruit them. So once again, as we look to move forward, we need accountability at the very highest level. We need to have expectations of our superintendents and those leaders. And we need to continue to support, you know, the teachers at the local levels that are interacting with our children day to day. So that's what I'm asking of you today, just for consideration. You know, you were voted not to just approve everything, to agree with everything, but to also ask very difficult questions and dive deep into the numbers. Thank you.
Thanks for calling, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right, that wraps up our open forum. That takes us now to number three, our consent agenda for approval. First, is there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like removed for discussion? Andrew? I'd like to separate item F for a separate vote. Okay. We need a motion. No, we can just move it. No, I don't think you move it. I thought any one member has the right to pull something else. Yep, so then we go items withdrawn to consent agenda. So we'll take item F down to number four. Are there any other items? All right, then I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item F. So moved.
Second.
Beth?
All votes have been entered. The motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, so that consent agenda passes. Before we move on to discuss item F, I'd just like to point out in the personnel actions to congratulate our new principal at Franklin, Greg Lundin. It's a really big hire for our district and excited to have some meeting there. All right, items withdrawn from consent agenda. Andrew, if you want to take item F. And I apologize, I made a mistake and pulled the wrong item. I'm going to vote yes on F. I also would have voted yes on the item I really meant, which was E, which I also have no problem with. I just want to, I think it's a very large, the transportation contract was a very large contract, and I think should have been taken separately due to its size and significance. That being said, I will move the approval of bids as listed under item F.
Second.
All right.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
I'm just going to take a verbal vote.
No problem.
Smith?
Hi.
Vanden Hoewel?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Leighton Warren?
Aye.
All right, pass six to zero. All right, taking us now into presentations, we had two listed. The legislative update is first. After consulting with Laura Leighton Warren, we don't have a legislative update for this meeting. So we will move past that one, and that takes us then to the presentation on equity, diversity, and inclusion. Steve, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward tonight. We have been engaged in much professional development over the course of the year. We've got a group that is working with the Wisconsin Leadership Institute, Urban Leadership Institute. We also have a group working with the AASA Equity in Action Cohort. And then we have several other smaller groups that are working in-house on our focus on equity, diversity, and inclusion. And Katie Sulzer is going to walk us through a presentation summarizing where we've been, where we're at, and where we're going. Katie, I'll turn it over to you. I think Josh is going to drive the PowerPoint for us.
Perfect. Thanks, Steve. I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Like Steve had mentioned, my name is Katie Sulzer, and I'm the Director of Pupil Services and Equity for the District. I'm also here along with Claudia Hendrickson, who is the Executive Director of Student Services, and then Vicki Byer, Deputy Superintendent. So they may be also interjecting pieces along the way here. So the purpose of tonight's presentation really is to update the Board and the community as to where we are with our work around equity, diversity, and inclusion, as well as our upcoming timeline and commitment to the work. So just as an awareness, for the purposes of this presentation, I may refer to equity, diversity, and inclusion as the acronym EDI. So I'll walk us through a short slideshow here, beginning with slide two. Thanks, Josh. We wanted to kind of start with the why and the purpose of our EDI work. And our work is really centered around student achievement and then making sure that all, and I highlight all right now, students feel a sense of inclusion and belonging. And if we look at some of our culture and climate survey data from previous years, it's evident that many of our students, especially those from marginalized groups, are frequently not feeling that sense of belonging in our educational institution. So even though this slide's data specifically calls out our racial demographics, when we refer to marginalized groups, I should say, we're also speaking about students with lower socioeconomic status, disabilities, English learners, and then LGBTQIA+ as well. And if I missed, there are additional groups as well, once we look at our data. So in order to really change that narrative of that lack of belongingness and achievement-opportunity gaps, we've been working on some things in our district along the way that Steve alluded to. And some of those things include building the capacity of staff in all areas of equity, diversity, and inclusion, providing students with safe spaces to share with them, share and be themselves, and then really trying to identify some of those barriers that are perpetuating the opportunity gap. And then attempting to widen our own cultural lenses. And when I say "our," I mean staff and students. It's important to learn about other cultures, religions, identities, other than our own. And then lastly, improving academic and social emotional outcomes for all students. So moving on to slide three, Josh. In our previous slide that I just spoke of, some of the overarching areas of focus I mentioned, but I also wanted to kind of drill down a little bit further and kind of define what that looks like for us. And so I won't talk through all of these bullet points, but definitely wanted to highlight some of them for you. I also kind of wanted to mention that this slide isn't all-encompassing. There is additional work that's happening. So in particular, I wanted to highlight during the 19, or I'm sorry, I'll date myself here. 2009 and '10 school year, the Equity Department was created. And this was where the district really called out and was intentional about being committed to the work. And the district dedicated positions as well, or full-time equivalents, positions to the department and this work. In addition, the next bullet point is the Gary Howard Institute. So some of buildings began training with Gary Howard. The Gary Howard Institute focused on personal growth in areas of racial and social justice, but also systemic transformation for the purpose of achieving social justice and then equity in our schools. Another area I'd like to highlight is the WIULI, partway down the list there, which is our Wisconsin Urban Leadership Institute. And those are the big five districts that were invited in our state. So Madison, Milwaukee, Racine, ourselves, Kenosha. Did I miss anyone? We currently have cohorts of administrators participating in this each year. And then they attend learning opportunities every about six to eight weeks. But it also involves coaching in the area of equity. And then from that, they use their building data to administer, develop a capstone project to address the gaps in their buildings. And then lastly, in 2018, this is where we kind of paused and each department kind of took a look at, like, equity isn't a thing off to the side. It's really embedded in all of our work, in all of our departments. And so each department really took a look at how equity needs to be embedded, and they created a summary of department's high-leverage action steps to help us move towards that change. Next slide, Josh. So like I had mentioned, in 2018, we really had to ask ourselves, how is this being embedded in all of our work, in all of our departments, in every building? So we had to ask ourselves, are we really closing achievement, our opportunity gaps for all students? Are we validating the cultures of all students? Are we really widening our own cultural lenses? And then when we look at our mission to educate all students to be college and career, college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world, are we really holding up to that mission? So our data told us otherwise. Some of our data was moving a bit, but not to the liking of how we wanted it. So slide five, we realized that we really needed to make some revisions to our work. And so we recognized this is not an overnight journey and that we really need to do more diagnostic work. We need to drill down into our data and really do some root cause analyses as to why our data points aren't moving. And then in turn, create goals and strategies and getting there and find a way to monitor our implementation. Are we doing what we say we're doing? So we realized that we needed to develop really an organizational framework for change. So in an effort to do some expert, or I'm sorry, in an effort, we reached out for some expert guidance for our work, and we partnered with, like Steve said, Hanover Research to administer a diagnostic or a survey that some of you just participated in likely. And this was really a way to find out perceptions around EDI across the district. So all students, grades six through 12. So all students, grades six through twelve, all families, all staff were invited to participate. And then from this, and we just finished that window, so from this, we'll use these results plus our district data from the past two or three years to help develop a plan that will address these disparities. So slide six, Josh. So with this, I will share, and everyone can read on this slide, but I'll go over real quickly. I'll share intended outcome for our work with Hanover, with our leadership team, the EDI Task Force, and then our Equity Department is really to develop a three-year strategic equity plan to support a multi-level systems of approach to ensure that every child has an equitable opportunity for success and inclusion in our district. And last slide. So the last slide shares with you the timeline for completion. And it's the completion of the plan, the implementation, and then the monitoring piece, which would be the Advisory Committee. And so I wanted to highlight where we are right now, and you can see on the timeline, we are on target. We are meeting as a task force coming up here in the next few weeks to really look at, and there are workshops that we're doing to look at our data and potential gaps in our data, and then looking at steps moving forward of breaking down our task force into subcommittees to really analyze where we want to go. And then the recommendation will come back to the leadership team as to which goals, strategies, and then the monitoring piece. So this is all I have. As we move forward, I'll be providing updates to you. And just wondered if Claudia or Vicki had anything they wanted to share, or if there are questions.
I just would add that the task force, we intentionally made that task force representative of the diversity in our, in our district. And Katie, if you want to speak more to the makeup of the task force, that would be wonderful.
Sure. So the task force, like Claudia said, we really intentionally wanted to make sure all voices were there, but not only is there the racial diversity, but we also looked at special ed representation, English learners, LGBTQIA+ And then we, we wanted to make sure not only did we have racial diversity, but, and other groups, but we also wanted to have diversity in the work groups. So we have community partners, we have parents, we have students, as well as multiple staff groups represented. So for example, paraprofessionals, administrators, teachers. So we wanted to make sure that we share that piece out as well.
I'll just add that I want to thank you, Katie and Claudia, for your leadership in this important work. We have a lot more to do, and I know the two of you are ready for it. So thank you.
All right. Many of us had the ability to review this presentation late last week and had time to, to speak to many of the staff. Are there any questions regarding the presentation? All right. Thank you very much for sharing that work with us. We really appreciate it. We know it's a long journey, but excited that we're on it. So thank you. All right, let me grab my agenda here. All right, we're moving on to number six, action items. We've got a long list. Some will, will obviously warrant some discussion. Some we may have discussed and researched at previous meetings and will be able to pass relatively quickly. So Laura, I think you're gonna start. The first one here, oh, I'm sorry, the first one is Gbabs for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This is an action request from Trustee Becker. And Andrew, if you're comfortable, I'll throw it to you first regarding the school year calendar.
Thank you. I move that the district return to in-person instruction for all scheduled school days beginning with the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year.
Is there a second before we have discussion? Am I allowed to second a motion?
Yeah.
No.
I second.
All right, we'll have discussion. Andrew, since you made the motion, I'll let you go.
Sure. I think, I think we're having, I'm being asked, others maybe being asked as well, are we, are we scheduled to go back to, I hesitated to say five days here because there are regularly scheduled school weeks that aren't five days. I think the way I worded the motion was correct because if a family has chosen a virtual option, those students are not scheduled in person. So I think the way I said, in-person instruction next year for all scheduled school days. If there's a better way of wording it, I'm open to it, but I've had people tell me, you know, we, we choice out this year, we want to come back, but we want to know that we, we think you might not even be planning to start five days next year. I, I have told anyone who asked me that I've heard nothing to the contrary about it. But I think it needs to be made official because I, I don't know in the absence of an official change, if anything officially changes, probably not.
Andrew, one, I mean, one thing that I will maybe suggest, if somebody wants to, to possibly make amendment, to make that clear. First, I want to say, you know, we've approved a calendar for the year. It lists the dates. I understand your, your desire to try to make this as clear as possible. I just wonder if the motion is clear enough. I want to make sure that families know that if they want a virtual option next year, they will have it. And so maybe your motion makes that clear enough, but certainly want to make sure that families know that. Any other thoughts?
Certainly my intent.
Yeah, yep, I know, I know that. Go ahead, Nancy.
What happens if we have to close due to COVID?
Then we, then we make a motion and close due to COVID and set COVID criteria. Yeah, yeah. So I mean, Andrew's motion essentially just reiterates what, what we've said, what the calendar says, that we intend to go back full-time, five days a week. Certainly, it doesn't preclude us from another variant, a community spike. Things get to an unsafe level, and then us having to have another conversation. This doesn't prevent that from happening. But to Andrew's point, it sort of officially endorses the fact that we are planning five days a week in person for the students who want it, while always maintaining a virtual option. So.
All right.
Would you mind if I just throw the motion on the screen?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you, Beth.
Can you read that? Does that look right, Andrew?
So now that I see it in, in print, I think, and I think if there's unanimous consent, I can, we don't have to separately vote it as an amendment, but to add to the end of that for sure.
If, if you add it on there, for those students who have chosen in-person instruction. Okay.
Is everyone comfortable with that change?
That addition? Okay. I think it's, it's clear that the students have chosen in-person instruction. It doesn't offer any kind of, well, you know, there isn't, yeah, I think this covers it well, yes.
Right. Any other comments? All right. Beth, if you want to do a voice vote, or if you can do whatever is easier for you.
I'd like to do a voice vote.
Okay.
Okay. Smith?
Aye.
Vandenhuvel?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Leighton Warren?
Aye.
Right. Motion passes six to zero. All right. The next item, a DPI identification number, as just a quick reminder before we read the motion here, as we look to open up a new virtual K-five school, we needed to apply for a DPI identification number. Laura, do you want to?
I move that the district create the Gbabs online school commencing, am I reading the right one?
Yep.
Okay. Commencing with the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year for the grades four K to five, and that the district shall apply to the Department of Public Instruction in accordance with the creation of such school, for the appropriate school identification number as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Online voting's open. A votes have been entered. The motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right. Motion passes six, zero. Next item is the twenty-twenty, twenty-one school calendar. Maybe, why don't you read the motion first, and then I'll let Steve speak to this item.
I move that the modified twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school calendar as presented be approved. Second.
All right. Before we take the vote here, Steve, just want to explain this item.
Just a reminder that Wednesday as a virtual day for us was scheduled to be the last day of school for some of our students. Due to the fact that we will actually be collecting technology on that Tuesday, that would make it much closer to impossible for many of those students to participate on that Wednesday. We will have enough hours and minutes of instruction by the end of that day on Tuesday. And so we recommend this modification in the calendar in order to have a uniform and for all students, and to allow us to pick up the hardware effectively.
Any other discussion or questions on that item? All right. Go ahead, Beth.
Voting has been opened. A vote's been entered. The motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Right. Motion passes six, zero. Next one is fee schedule. Laura?
Eric, did you mention that we've, that we discussed all these in our last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Okay. I moved that the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two fee schedule as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just a quick reminder here that we have waived most school fees for next year. All right. Go ahead, Beth.
Voting is open. A votes have been entered. The motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion passes six to zero. Next one, go ahead, Laura.
Sorry. I move that the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to the, to and for the defeasance of certain of the general obligation, school building and improvement bonds dated July twelfth. Dated July twelfth, twenty-seventeen, as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right.
Voting's open. A votes have been entered. The motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right. Motion passes six, zero. Laura, keep going.
I moved that the Board of Education approve the authorization of commencement of vaping litigation against Jules Lab, Inc. as presented and execute the attorney-client fee contract authorizing the legal services of the Franz Law Group APC, APLC as attorneys for the district in the mass tort lawsuit against Jules Lab, Inc.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Andrew.
Just to be clear, this is a straight contingency fee agreement. If, if, if lots and lots and lots of time is spent and zero dollars are recovered, we pay zero dollars.
That's correct, Andrew. There is no fee to enter the litigation, and there is no fee or cost for the ongoing litigation. If there's no recovery, the district pays nothing.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, go ahead, Beth.
Online voting has been opened. A votes have been entered. The motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion passes six, zero. Moving on, student dress code.
I move that the proposed revisions to the policy four, four, three point one, student dress as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Andrew.
Is, as written, does this make permanent the change where we left hats to the individual buildings, or is this, are we extending for, there was some discussion about extending for a year.
The policy that is in front of the board tonight, we made the change that you requested. And in your materials, Andrew, if you look at the last provision, we made the change to expire at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Yep, I do see it now. Okay, thank you. I, yeah, we, absent the opportunity to have the kind of extensive meetings and discussion with people in the buildings, you know, I'm not thrilled about the idea of quote-unquote punting for another year, but I certainly, I think there needs to be decisions on some hard questions before we make it permanent, but for a year, I guess there's probably not a better alternative here.
Yeah, just as another quick refresher, I believe it was October or November of twenty-nineteen that we had this conversation. We looked at the policy. We made some pretty significant and unanimous improvements to the policy. And there were other areas that there was still some disagreement. And so at the time, we made the improvements that we all agreed upon. We put some things in there that left schools with some decisions to make and put in a date to revisit that. Obviously, the pandemic hit shortly after, so the, the opportunity for that policy to even be enacted in a school with students in person has been limited. So the compromise here is to pass this policy with another sunset date in one year. And we mentioned as we launch our committee structure that sending this to the Policy and Governance Committee will probably happen relatively soon. All right. Anyone else? All right, go ahead, Beth.
Online voting has been opened. Online voting has been opened. A votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, motion passes six zero, and that takes us to letter H.
I move that proposed revisions to policy and rule four, four, seven point one. Staff use of physical force, physical restraint and seclusion as presented be approved.
Second.
Uh, discussions on this one? Andrew? Um, yes, I do have, um, a couple of amendments. Um, I move to amend, uh, the policy. Under section three. Uh, B, one. By striking the words quell a disturbance or. Yep, is, so it's in policy. Uh, it is in section three implementation. A paragraph B, uh. Item, list item one. Andrew, did you have multiple amendments, or was?
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just, wait, this is the language straight from the statute, one eighteen point three one, sub three, sub A. Regarding corporal punishment is, um. The subsection two regarding, so the, um, use of. Seclusion and restraint would be permitted. So long as they were using reasonable and necessary force to quell a disturbance or prevent an act. That threatens physical injury to any person, so this language is directly from the statute.
Yeah, and it also refers to something that. We state in rules that we only. Permit this for actual threats of physical danger, so to include quelling a disturbance. Anything that would be justifiably using seclusion or restraint. Would be covered under threatening physical injury, possess, uh, gain controllable weapons, self-defense, defense of others. That would all be, those would all be covered. There's, I, I can think of no. Valid reason that we would need to have quell a disturbance if all the, if all the physical danger things are covered.
Here's my concern tonight is, I would have liked to have had a discussion about this prior to tonight, so that we could have explored what this would look like. We're modifying policy that is now inconsistent with the state statute. And that makes me very reluctant to make that recommendation, that's something that the board should entertain. I, I could have done a little bit of research, we could have had some discussions, looked at what this looks like, involve Claudia Hendrickson. And Vicky Byer, but now the board's being asked to make changes to a policy that would be inconsistent with the statutory language.
Didn't, didn't we say last week that we can? We can choose, um. We don't have to use everything we're given in statutory language.
But when we make changes to our policy that is inconsistent with statutory language, that has implications. And unfortunately, the people who have to implement this policy and how that would be. Carried out in our schools aren't here to provide the input as to how that would impact. Our teachers and our staff who are providing a safe environment for all of our students. And I again, am not able to make a recommendation to the board as to whether our policy should be modified contrary to the state law.
I'll, I'll just, you know, I'll just vote no. Um, but we, you know, this idea that we say in the rules. And I, I, I'm pretty much in favor of the rules, the rules say that they're. Make it very clear, I think, there has to be actual physical danger that's being presented. Okay? But sometime, someday, someone's gonna say, I use, I restrained a student to quell a disturbance. And they're gonna have policy behind them, even if, even if they didn't do it by the rules, and. You know, people, people worry, you know, families of students with disabilities worry about things being over-applied. And I'm asking to take out, uh, one item here. That would have been a. Where everything else talks about the same physical danger stuff that's listed elsewhere, there's one thing in it that, that doesn't. Andrew, if I could, uh, just speak to it for a minute, uh, so I'm, I'm with you in the fact that I, I'm not a fan of that language. This policy was brought before us because of changes that we were forced to adopt at the state level, so it was, uh. Was originally brought to us because of that. I think there are, you know, this seems like it, it, it could be an adjustment, uh, certainly that I would get behind because of its vagueness. There are probably other things in the policy. We did mention that, uh, while there are state statutes, uh, that we have to maintain, we can always be stricter than some of that. So, probably another example of a policy that, uh, you know, could. We, we could look at, have a greater conversation, certainly would love to have families who've been impacted by this, uh, to, to have their voice. Uh, to be a part of making further improvements to the policy, so, um. I, I guess I'm in favor of, of passing this today with, again, another, uh, marker that. The opportunity to make improvements, um, could happen when we're able to get more feedback, we're able to do more research, so. That's my take on it.
Melissa, this is Claudia. Can, my, my understanding is that. Quell a disturbance is outlined, and, cause that's what the state statute says. But what we follow is our rule, we don't follow, I mean, we make our rule more stringent, so that it does do what. It does follow what Andrew wants it to follow, um, so. I guess I'm not understanding what taking quell out of the policy will do, cause we follow the rule.
Right, well, the, but the person who, you, you know, and I, again, I'm speaking about a extraordinarily rare. Bad apple among a outstanding staff of three thousand people, but you. Are never gonna have, get it completely right with all three thousand all the time. Isn't, I mean, po- policy is, policy is what the board officially says, and rule. Someone would have that out of saying, hey, I, policy is, policy is the highest. Statement that the, the board and the district make, and I quelled a disturbance. At least interjecting doubt into the situation.
And I, I don't disagree with wanting to make it clear, my only concern was, we're just first. Making this motion tonight, we didn't have an opportunity to talk with those individuals who are in the schools. Using the policy, this part, this language exists already in our policy, this is not a change. This is language that has existed since two thousand and twelve for sure, because that's when the statute was changed. So this language has existed for almost ten years, and now we're making a motion tonight to change language. In the policy that hasn't had a chance to be vetted by other individuals who are the ones who implement the policy, that's my concern. And so, given what Erica said, that is, we have an opportunity to have the policy committee relook at this. Get more input from our stakeholders, that it's been in the policy since two thousand and twelve. It has not been an issue, uh, we do, as Claudia said, follow the language of the rule, that's how it's implemented. I, that's, that's my concern.
Well, I'll withdraw my amendment, but. Just, you know, I, absent, uh. Absent a blatant, uh, something that no one here would ever do. I would never let someone have the, have something just, um. Not even seconded for the purposes of discussion, but I'll withdraw it. Um, and I'll vote, I'll have to vote no this time, but I look forward to a further discussion. Go ahead, Nancy.
I'm trying to think about, you know, a situation where that might, you need to quell something, and, and how about if somebody is. On stage doing hate speech or something like that, and they refuse to, to stop, what would happen in that case?
You know? Yeah, I mean, I think that just speaks to the fact of why we need more, more feedback. What, what exactly could that mean, as we sit here around the table, uh, it's easy to say that this doesn't feel right. But, given, giving them the opportunity to share why it might need to be in there. And, and again, there's probably other things in here that maybe we can make adjustments to as well, so. Go ahead, Dawn.
Melissa, we have to pass something now to stay in compliance with the state, correct? So that's kind of why we were talking about passing this as written, and then bringing this to the policy committee to review.
Right, again, the reason that it came to us initially was to stay in compliance with the state. Uh, the opportunity to dive into the policy, to really make improvements, to get stakeholder feedback, parents, students, and staff. That's something that we would look forward to in the future. Go ahead, Laura.
I, I'm with Andrew, and I know we talked about this, um, at our last meeting a bit about it being, um. It's just, I agree with the quality disturbance being, being too vague and too open to interpretation. What are our options in, in terms of if this has to be. Passed in order to be in compliance, but can there be a contingency on the motion that we, um, that we put this as something that we look at? So that doesn't get lost, because I know how hard, you know, once you change policy or approve policy. It can be easy then to, to put off going back to it, cause, you know, especially if you're procrastinated. You know, you get something done, and then to have to go back to it, um, so I was just wondering, is that, is there something like that that could be a compromise?
So I've added, uh, policy four, four, seven, one, and four, four, three, one, uh, to the draft agenda that the. Policy and Governance Committee would review as they undertake a policy review that starts with this next school year.
So that, that's really the accountability there is, as a board, we'll have a, a chair and other board members who are there. Know that we've had this conversation, and they're the ones who make the agenda for the policy governance, uh, meetings, so. That's where the accountability comes in. Good question. Go ahead, Andrew. Yeah, so, just, you know, it's not your question, Nancy, I think if, if there was a student on stage shouting out hate speech. And restraint or physical restraint or seclusion was used and, um. That would, our rule says you can't use those defined techniques unless certain. Danger or, or credible threats of danger is there, so. It would still be against the rule, so there, um. Well, I'm sure there's other disciplinary options available, this, this wouldn't be, it would still be. But that's exactly, you know, what I was concerned about, is we have a situation where someone could quote. Policy and say, called a disturbance, and then be told, you know, well, it's against the, against the rule. All right, um. Beth, I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, online voting has been opened. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried, the results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Vanden Hoewel, yes, Smith, yes, Beck, Becker, no, McCoy, yes, Leighton and Warren, yes, Welch, yes.
All right, motion passes five to one. Right, uh, Laura, next one, employee compensation from federal grants.
I move that the Board of Education policy three, seven, one point five. Employee compensation from federal grants as presented be approved.
Second.
Just wanna clarify, it's six, seven, one point five. That, that, just, no problem, uh, any discussion there? All right, Beth.
Online voting's open. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion passes six zero. Yep.
I move that the proposed amendment of the twenty twenty twenty-one suspension of board policies. Eight, three, zero, and eight, six, zero, as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Voting is open. A votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, and Laura, last one for you.
I move that pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section one, one, eight point zero. Seven, parent four, parent CP, the written drill evaluation submitted by the principals from all. District schools as reviewed be accepted.
Second.
Go ahead, Steve.
Just a note for the, uh, general public, if you're watching, uh, because of the, uh, nature of the content of the report. Uh, it is a confidential document, it has been shared with the board prior to the meeting. Uh, so that they were able to review it, but we are unable to provide it to the public.
All right, go ahead, Beth.
Voting has been opened. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, motion passes six zero. All right, uh, Laura Leighton Warren, if you want to, uh, take over reading the motions, uh, starting with item L.
Sure, I move that a one point two, three percent base wage increase be applied to the paraprofessional salary schedule. Commencing July first, twenty twenty-one, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year as presented, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Andrew. Uh, I just wanted to get one clarification, and this, this applies to all of them, I, I received a question about how. Often we're approving, um. Raises, uh, now, we're, this, we happen to be ready to do ahead of. Ahead of the start of the next year, which is for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Um, last year, we weren't ready before the fiscal year, right, we voted some months into the fiscal year, is that right? Okay, so this isn't a second raise in the span of less than a year, it's a year that. We did, the last time we voted on a raise, it was for twenty twenty, um, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And now we're just ready for this one in advance, that won't kick in till July first, twenty twenty-one.
And just a note, I, so, in terms of best practice, when possible, we like to, uh, enact. Uh, this work prior to the end of the current fiscal year. Uh, so that, uh, all of the actions are able to be implemented, ready to go for the start of the next fiscal year. When we're unable to do that, which happens, uh, sometimes due to the state budgetary process. Uh, that then requires us to go back and calculate back pay, uh, which is an incredibly time-consuming and labor-intensive process, so. Uh, when at all possible, we prefer to have this work done before the end of the current fiscal year, so that it can be implemented in the next fiscal year, so. Um, you're absolutely right, Andrew, we were late last time, and we're a little early this time. Uh, that would be our best practice, and certainly our intent were possible moving forward.
Any other discussion? All right, Beth.
Voting's open. A vote have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Go ahead, Laura. You can go to the next one.
Okay, I move that, uh, one point two, three percent wage increase be applied to the salary schedule of the clerical, food service, maintenance. Monitors, elementary and secondary, and trade salary schedules commencing July first, twenty twenty-one, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. and trade salary schedules commencing July first, 2021, for the 2021 22, 2022 school year, fiscal year, excuse me, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Beth.
All votes have been entered, the motion has carried, the results of the individual board member vote are as follows. Banden Hubel abstain, Smith, yes, Becker, yes, McCoy, yes, Layton and Warren, yes, Welch, yes.
All right, motion passes five zero, and I'll just clarify that I abstained because I have a family member in that employment group.
Okay, I move that a wage increase be applied to the support staff salary schedules as set forth here and commencing July first, 2021, for the 2021 2022 fiscal year, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Beth.
Voting is open. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion passes six zero, go ahead, Laura.
Oh, I move that one point two three percent wage increase be applied to the plumber salary schedule commencing July first, 2021, for the 2021 22 fiscal year, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Go ahead, Beth.
Voting is open. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion carries six zero, Laura.
He, I move that one point two three percent base wage increase be applied to the executive assistant salary schedule commencing July first, 2021, for the 2021 22 fiscal year, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Beth?
Voting is open. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion carries six zero, Laura.
I move that a one point two three percent salary increase be applied to the technical and professional staff salary schedule commencing July first, 2021, for the 2021 22 fiscal year, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Beth?
Voting is open. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion carries six zero, Laura.
I move that a one point two three percent salary increase be applied to the manager's salary schedule commencing July first, 2021, for the 2021 22 fiscal year, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Beth?
Voting is open. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, motion carries six zero, Laura.
I move that a one point two three percent salary increase be applied to the educator's salary schedule commencing July first, 2021, for the 2021 2022 fiscal year, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? None, go ahead, Beth.
Voting is open. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried, the results of individual board member votes are as follows. Banden Hubel abstain, Smith, yes, Becker, yes, McCoy, yes, Layton and Warren, yes, Welch, yes.
Motion carries five zero, and again, I abstained because I have a family member in that employment group. Go ahead, Laura.
I move that a one point two three percent salary increase be applied to the administrator's salary schedule commencing July first, 2021, for the 2021 22 fiscal year, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Beth.
Voting is open. All votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, motion carries six zero. That takes us to the end of our action items. Last agenda item tonight is agenda setting. You'll see in the board meeting schedule, we do have a board retreat scheduled for next Monday, May 17. Our work session is May 24. June 14, we have a draft agenda there. We also are working on scheduling a second board retreat because we're not able to fit all the agenda items on next Monday, the 17. Are there any agenda items that haven't been brought up before that you want to get on our radar to try to schedule at a future meeting? Go ahead, Andrew.
I just want to make it clear that the, well, I assume that it will likely be placed with the Education Committee after that is created. I I never withdrew my motion for about a board role in class size. I think it's been unclear over the past year what the what the mechanism was. I mean, it went through the number of readings at the right times, provided that that provided that that does get onto a Education Committee agenda, then I'm willing to let it work through that process, but I've not withdrawn that in any way.
Absolutely. Any other agenda items? All right, seeing none, then I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Hi, opposed, motion carries six zero, and that concludes our May board meeting. Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
I shortly tell the motion. You have been watching the Green Bay area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications at gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.